Welcome to the Mount Clemens City Commission Meeting. It is Monday, April 5th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. We'll call the meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please. Campbell.
Here.
Fournier. Commissioner Fournier. Unmute yourself, Laura. I think I don't see her phone thing up here anymore. We may have lost her. Okay. Good now.
Here.
Hammond.
Here.
Croft.
Here.
Menzger. Voorhees.
Here.
I'll entertain a motion to excuse Commissioner Fournier and Commissioner Menzger. Sorry, we need a motion first? Yeah, I missed who moved.
Motion to approve the absence of Commissioner Menzger and Fournier from the meeting.
Departed.
Moved by Commissioner Campbell, supported by Commissioner Voorhees. Roll call, please. Campbell.
Yes.
Fournier. I'm sorry. Good now.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Croft. Yes. Voorhees.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to announcements, acknowledgements, communications and reports. We have a proclamation for the Greater Morning Star Baptist Church 100th anniversary that I'll go ahead and read. Whereas on April 2nd, 2021, the congregation of Greater Morning Star Baptist Church celebrated its 100th year of service in Mount Clemens. And whereas the church was established in 1921 as Second Baptist Church, which was the first black church in Mount Clemens at 79 Robert Street. In 1930, they were named Morning Star Baptist and again changed in 1972 to what is now known as the Greater Morning Star Missionary Baptist Church. And whereas in 1980 through 90, the church had many accomplishments, such as burning the mortgage of the church building, completing multiple renovations, increasing the parking lot to accommodate the growing attendance, and purchasing a bus van and additional property to allow for future expansion. And whereas, as the church grew, they added several new ministries and midweek praise and teaching services. Ministry of Caring was one of their great additions. Through this ministry, they can provide to the community the food pantry ministry, the clothes closet ministry, and health and educational ministry. And whereas in 2002, the church was able to open the doors to accommodate the homeless. Starting in 2005, they were able to expand the food and clothing pantry to provide a full range of social service functions, including job training, help with job searches, and house the homeless during the winter months and the warm season. And whereas in 2010, the church was able to continue to grow its television broadcast, The Beacon of Light, that was launched in Metro Detroit and can now be livestreamed all over the US and in Africa. And whereas, the Greater Morning Star has spent 100 years in Mount Clemens and has helped countless families during times of need and provide faith and fellowship to our community. Now, therefore, I, Laura Croft, Mayor of the City of Mount Clemens, on behalf of the City Commission and all our citizens, do hereby recognize and congratulate Greater Morning Star Missionary Baptist Church on their 100th anniversary and take this special time to honor the church and all they do for the betterment of the community and for people in need. Dated April 5th, 2021. Laura Croft, Mayor of Mount Clemens. Is there any other announcements, acknowledgements, reports? Okay, hearing none. We'll go ahead and move on to number five, adoption of the agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, Mayor Croft, I move that we approve or adopt the agenda as presented.
Thank you. Moved by Commissioner Voorhees.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Hammond. Roll call, please. Campbell.
Yes.
Good now.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Croft. Yes. Menzger.
Voorhees. Yes.
Thank you. This section of the meeting is on public participation. We ask that first, everyone give their first name who would like to participate. We will form a line. And when I call your name, we ask that you give your full name, your residential address, and you abide by our three-minute rule. Ms. Martin, can you do the three-minute timer for me tonight?
Yep, I do that every week.
For mayor? Okay, because I'm using my phone today, so I don't have a timer.
Yeah, it's kind of loud, so when you hear that beep, that means your time is up.
Okay, perfect. Do I have anyone at this point who would like to get in line? Ms. Dixon? Okay. Jean, do I have anyone else who would like to get in line? Oh, I can't see who it is.
Name, Patrick.
Okay, Patrick. Okay, so probably just have Jean and Patrick. Okay, we'll go ahead and start with that. And so, Ms. Dixon, will you give us your full name, your residential address, and we'll give you your three minutes?
My name is Jean Dixon. I live at 114 Needle Street. And I'm a member of Greater Morning Star. And I just want to say thank you for the proclamation. I didn't hear it all, I just got on, but I do appreciate you. And Mayor, we love you and we appreciate all you're doing for Greater Morning Star and the Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations again to Greater Morning Star. Thank you. Go ahead, Patrick, you're next. You might have to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yep, now we can.
Patrick Abajuta, 138 North on Grashit. I'm talking, I'm not sure how we're going to do this when it comes to 9E, because there's quite a bit to go over. Since this is the first reading, I'm not sure if there was ever a workshop or anything that the community had a census or spoke about was able to concerning this subject. If there was a meeting, I'm not sure when it was held. But going through this, there's actually a lot of contradictions over what the 2008 MMA law was and what this ordinance is proposing. And a lot of this looks like it's, I mean, there's some language differences and whatnot, but there's a lot of stuff in here that I would love to go line by line over, but I know the three-minute marker wouldn't hold. For instance, like the biggest contradiction that I know of, especially with this community that we're in now, we had a lot of residents complain about neighbors growing back in the day. And now we're forcing this into residential, into a residential area, which we're taking out of commercial areas. But then we're also regulating this like it's a commercial entity, charging fees and permits, which was, this was never allowed or never was about when this law first came into, because this was about providing medicine. And we've taken this and we're making this a business entity, even though we're trying not to say it's a business entity or expansion for commercial growth or whatever you want to call it. Excuse me, but the way that this is going about is, by all means, I would like to see some regulations on improvements of electrical, water, mechanical, HVAC, stuff like that. I think that's great. But to go through a regulatory process where you're charging a permit fee to provide medicine for patients and then allowing two people to grow into a home, that's 144 plants. So that you're pushing it more like a business doing it this way versus actually, you know, making this into a safer area. Because as a caregiver, we're allowed to process and make different types of medicine, topicals, ointments, vape, whatever it is, for our patients and some of those extraction processes to use chemicals that can be lethal. And there's accidents that do happen. And that's better regulated in a commercial entity than it is in a neighborhood in the middle of a subdivision. And you know, there's a lot of laws that's already pertaining to this as it sits. And it's just like, I would love to go over all these here, but the three-minute time markers is not enough time for this. And I know this is just the first reading, so I would love to submit something to the council and the Commission that's pretty much line by line and what conflicts with the MMA 2008 law. And the biggest thing that I've seen on this is just having a patient, well, only caregivers and patients are allowed to go into the room. This also gives the city or city personnel authority to do so at any time for inspection, which is technically illegal. And it's in 2008 law, and I actually have case law that supports that as well. So I'm not sure how to go about this completely. But I mean, is there something at the end of the meeting that we're able to go and go along within the three minutes to go over this? Prefer my shield, my time.
Time's up, please. Patrick, there is another section for public participation at the end, so another two minutes, but I'd also encourage you to contact the City Manager's Office. Okay, so we'll move on now. Do we have any further public participation before I close public participation?
I'll send you one, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move on then to, do we have any administrative responses, Mr. Johnson?
We do not.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and move on to number eight, approval of minutes. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the work session and regular city commission meeting minutes for March 15 and also the work session meetings for March 22nd, 2021.
Moved by Commissioner Hammond.
Support.
Support by Commissioner Campbell. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call, please. Good now.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Croft. Yes. Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to general business, 9A, adopt the resolution extending state of emergency declaration. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you. On March 31st, Mayor Croft declared a state of emergency continues to exist in Mount Clemens due to the coronavirus pandemic. Actually, the numbers are spiking in the state and the indications we have is that they're also spiking in the county. Under current provisions of the Michigan Open Meetings Act, public bodies may continue to meet remotely where a state or local declaration of emergency is in effect. This authority expires after December 31st, 2021. The mayor's declaration is only effective for seven days. To continue meeting remotely after April 7th, the Commission must act to extend the emergency declaration. Provided a resolution to do so, this resolution is written to do a 90-day extension.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor Croft, I move to adopt the resolution extending the emergency declaration as presented.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Voorhees, supported by Commissioner Campbell. Does anyone have any questions or comments on this? I just wanted to state that before giving my declaration, which was seven days ago, I made sure that I contacted every commissioner and had the support of those commissioners to see, you know, where they stood on virtual meetings. And for the last year, we were able to have virtual meetings because of state statute that said, you know, during, we can do virtual meetings. They changed or made an exclusion from the Open Meetings Act. The law recently changed as of March 30th, needing us to do this declaration. So I just wanted to be clear that by no means are we going to shut anything down or do any type of other means under this declaration. It's solely to have a virtual meeting. Are there any other questions or comments from the Commission?
Mayor Croft. Glenn Voorhees. I have to commend you for taking a stand on this. And I know you took some heat and I read the comments on Facebook. You then did a presentation and you were very, very clear on exactly what we were going to do and that we were all in favor of this. This is a matter of life and death. And we have to realize that we have to take care of ourselves and our community. So meeting remotely doesn't change it. We've done it for a year and people can still, you know, contact us with their comments. But I have to commend you for taking a stand on this.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, hearing none, roll call, please. Good now.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Croft. Yes. Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Moving on to general business, 9B, request to waive patio permit fees. Mr. Johnson?
Yes, we did this last year. Partially because of the COVID emergency, we really wanted to encourage restaurants to use outdoor patios. So we're asking you once again to agree to waive permit fees for the three right now that have used it in the past and any others that choose to use it. Should note that there are other restaurants with outdoor patios, but those other ones have their patios on private property and do not require a permit.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion, please.
I'll move to waive the outdoor patio permit fees for the 2021 season.
Moved by Commissioner Hammond.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Campbell. Is there any questions or comments? I just want to let everyone know that the businesses were really pleased with this last year. They said it was very helpful. You know, they've taken, obviously, restaurant businesses and bars have taken, you know, huge hits in the last year. And they say, although it's only $1,000, $1,000 right now is very significant to all of them. And so they also have mentioned many times, they feel as though now more than ever that they are partners with the city and that the city, you know, they feel as though even just this gesture alone, you know, seems like that we want to be on the same team as them. And so I think it's much appreciated. Is there anyone else with any questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call, please. Hammond.
Yes.
Croft. Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Good now.
Yes.
Agenda item 9C, approve resolution creating a downtown social district. Mr. Johnson?
On February 1st, Sedum fellow Kate Bell gave a presentation on social districts to the City Commission. And the Commission provided city staff with favorable feedback. On March 3rd, the DDA voted unanimously to recommend that the city adopt the attached resolution establishing the Oasis Social District in downtown Mount Clemens. Do have Kate on the call tonight, as Brian is not here. And I'm going to call on her to amplify my comments and answer any questions.
You want, before Kate gives us the presentation, would you like me to get the motion started and all that, so we can have discussion?
Yeah, that'd be a good idea.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion, please.
Mayor Croft, I move to approve the attached resolution authorizing the creation of a social district in the downtown Mount Clemens.
Moved by Commissioner Voorhees.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Hammond. I'm sorry, Commissioner Goodenough. And, okay, now, Kate, go ahead.
All right, everyone, I don't want to necessarily repeat myself. The members of the Commission heard my presentation back in February. Those who have also sat in on DDA meetings in the past and see a few familiar faces on this call have also heard this ad nauseam. But to give a quick recap, last year, the Michigan State Legislature passed a bill authorizing individual municipalities to establish what are called social districts and commons areas, where people who are over the age of 21 are legally allowed to buy alcohol can take alcohol purchase from eligible licensees and just enjoy it while strolling around outside within that contained social district and commons area. The social district is initially and primarily, I think we would say, a measure for the COVID response. I know that last month, the state eased up restrictions on dining up to 50% capacity or up to 100 people for dining establishments. And we've seen the numbers recently, particularly from Macomb County, that new cases have skyrocketed. I was looking at the chart just now and it looks like over the past week, new cases have been above 700 per day within the county. So when the legislature first rolled this out, it was, I think, meant to be a more temporary measure. We're seeing now that this pandemic unfortunately is not going away. But beyond the immediate COVID impacts, frankly, people enjoy being outside. A lot of the programs we've seen for increasing patio capabilities within the downtown for bars and restaurants as well. People just enjoy being outside. It fits in with the mission for Main Street USA for enhancing a more pedestrian-friendly downtown area. So this is also just a broader economic and downtown revitalization effort. So the two go hand in hand. This is the first step for creating one that the city has to do. You'll see attached within the packet, there is a map outlining the areas that we discussed within the DDA for the eligible bars and restaurants, trying to keep in mind sort of safety impacts, trying not to have people cross too many roadways and really containing it within our downtown core. To note on the map, there is a difference between establishments with active licenses and those with licenses currently in escrow. We wanted to detail that those licenses are in escrow, but they're still within the perimeter that we have outlined here. You'll also see the management and maintenance plan. It's fairly self-explanatory, but I'm happy to answer any questions that commissioners may have about that. And you'll also see a mock-up of the logo we've decided on and what it would look like on a cup, as well as the application that individual bars and restaurant owners would fill out in order to receive a permit from the city to be able to operate a social district establishment. Like I said, this is the first step. This is a resolution establishing the social districts. I know it's next on the agenda, but there also does need to be a little tweak to our city ordinances to allow for outdoor drinking in public spaces, but we'll be getting to that. Like I said, I'm happy to answer any questions or give some more insight as to what the process was like, if anyone's interested. But I know we've talked about this at length already, so I want to be respectful of all of your time.
Kate, when we discussed this at the DDA meeting, there was kind of a back and forth debate about if everyone takes a look at this map right now. The question at the DDA meeting was, how far do we extend the border north? I guess you would say northeast. And so we, there was some concern about going as far as license number 13 up there, which, you know, would be the new, well, it would be 143 North Main Street. And so that was something that, you know, it's kind of the outlier. And the DDA, we were kind of concerned about going that far north. But we thought we would bring it to the Commission in this way and then the Commission could kind of discuss. The original proposal went as far as, am I correct in saying number 12?
Actually, the original one that I had presented went up to 11. So it would end at Market Street before you would cross Market. And the reason for that was to avoid people crossing Market since it's a much busier roadway. We expanded it beyond. Some members of the DDA voiced concerns that some businesses in that area would feel left out for, they're literally across the street in this case, three blind mice. So we're not wanting anyone to take it personally, which is not the case. The concerns primarily are public safety, pedestrian safety, as well as enforcement, frankly. The larger the district, the more incongruous the district is, frankly, the harder it is to enforce with signage. But again, it can always be tweaked. We're bringing this forward sort of as the biggest that we would envision. And if the City Commission chooses, we can pare it down and amend the map so it contracts or even expands as small or as wide as the Commission would see fit. But that was sort of the underlying thinking for why we expanded it beyond our original presentation.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments by the Commission? Okay, hearing none, roll call, please. Croft. Yes. Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Good now.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Right. We'll move on to 9D, approve alcoholic beverages ordinance amendment, first reading and introduction. Could I have a motion, please?
I move to approve the first reading and introduction of the amendment to the alcoholic beverage ordinance and to set April 19, 2021, as the date of the second reading and adoption.
Moved by Commissioner Hammond.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Campbell. Mr. Johnson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This ordinance amendment is to bring the alcoholic beverage ordinances into compliance with the social district that you just approved. Right now, we don't allow in the alcoholic beverage ordinance outdoor consumption of alcoholic beverages in the downtown. So since you've already approved the one, I would recommend that you approve the ordinance amendment that needs to go with it.
I would just add that it does have a sunset clause like the legislation that goes with social districts. So December 31st, 2024, is that's, I'm assuming, the same one, Mr. Murray, as this is the same date?
That's correct.
Okay. Does anyone have any other further comments or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please. Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Good now.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Croft. Yes. Okay, moving on to 9E, approve introduction and first reading medical marijuana caregiver facility ordinance. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the adoption and first reading of the medical marijuana caregiver facility ordinance and set April 19, 2021, as the date for the second reading and the adoption of the ordinance.
Moved by Commissioner Hammond.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Goodenough. Mr. Johnson?
Yes. You'll recall that we passed a moratorium on the issuance of any permits, certificates or approvals on marijuana caregivers after learning that we could actually regulate them to an extent that we previously thought not possible. That's because of an April 27th Michigan Supreme Court decision. So the city attorney has drafted the attached ordinance and we're recommending that the City Commission approve first reading. And set second reading as provided.
Okay, great. Thank you. Mr. Murray, do you have anything that you want to add to us on this?
Just that the administration at the November sixteenth moratorium advised the commission that it was going to be its recommendation that caregiver operations only be allowed in residential districts. And the reason for that was that the city has experienced a number of collective or cooperatives in vacant industrial or commercial buildings where multiple caregivers have gone into one building, fenced it off, and they're growing plants as if they had a grower's license under the medical marijuana ordinance. So that is the reason why it's being restricted. Some other communities have done the direct opposite, where their problem, by way of example, Shelby Township. Their problem has been that multiple caregivers will get together and rent a four or five thousand square foot home. And suddenly you have hundreds upon hundreds of plants being rented, being grown in, in a home. Their problem is the reverse of ours. And the administration felt firmly that the caregiver operation should be restricted to single-family residential. And that's what the ordinance provides.
Does this ordinance prevent multiple caregivers in one home?
Yes, it's a limit of two caregivers. And it has to be their principal residence for each of them. And I would just add one other thing, and that is, as Mr. Johnson mentioned, for many years, the municipalities were all under the impression, because there was a court of appeals decision that said you could not regulate caregiver operations by zoning, by any, in any fashion. That was overruled last year in the case cited in, in the report, Deruder versus Byron Township, where our state Supreme Court said, oh, yes, you can, municipalities, you have the right to regulate it. And as a result, numerous communities have now adopted ordinance to regulate caregiver operation.
Is there any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I have a comment on this ordinance. I just want to say, based off of how I'm going to vote on it, I was a school teacher for thirty years. And there were several instances in which marijuana was involved with students that did not have a good outcome. And because of that, I've said I will never have anything to do with marijuana. I just, I'm just, I didn't like it. It didn't end up good, and I want to have nothing to do with it. So that's based off of that, why, why I'd be voting no on this.
So you don't want to regulate it?
No, I, I just, I, I am so tired of it, and based off of the experiences I had with kids at school, I, I just, I don't want to have anything to do with marijuana.
My understanding from the, what was presented tonight is that we're trying to put a cap on the amount of caregivers being able to be in a residence. Is that correct?
The ordinance does provide that there can only be two caregivers in a residence, and it has to be the principal residence for each caregiver.
Okay, and that makes sense to me because we don't want to have a situation like Sheldon Tasha.
Exactly.
Is there anyone else with comments or questions?
I have a question, Mayor Crop, and it's, and it's to Mike. Mike, how, how are they going to regulate this? I mean, you know, are you, you, you're going to go through the neighborhoods and knock on people's doors? Or how, how are we going to do this?
Well, there is a process where they're, they are supposed to fill out an application and receive a permit from the community development department. As the actual regulation, I would presume that the regulation will occur, as most regulation of ordinances does, and that is through complaints by neighbors.
Okay, all right. Thanks, Mike.
Are there any question, other questions or comments? Okay, hearing done. Roll call, please.
Voorhees.
Reluctantly, yes.
Campbell.
No.
Good, no.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Crop.
Yes. Okay, moving on to item S, support art space grant proposal. Sorry, my computer is loading. Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
I move the City of Mount Clemens City Commission hereby nominates the Anton Art Center to be an applicant agency for the purpose of submitting a proposal for consideration to the MI-oh-nine community project funded opportunity.
Support.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Hammond, supported by Commissioner Campbell. Mr. Johnson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Congressman Levin's office has announced two grant opportunities that we wish to support applications for. One is a transportation grant that we're actually applying for ourselves, applying to repave Hubbard Street. That one does not actually require any action by the city commission because that's our own application. The other is a community projects grant for which there are two Mount Clemens-based proposals, and we're recommending the city commission support both of them. We have talked to Congressman Levin's office about whether having two Mount Clemens proposals would compete with each other and make them less likely to get approved. And they assured us that's not the case, especially since one of the proposals is a joint proposal with another city. But the one that we're looking at right now, that's before you right now, is to request a grant to move the art space project into phase three pre-development. The first two phases of this project, the feasibility study and the art market study, have already been completed. Anton Art Center Executive Director Phil Gilchrist has requested the commission endorse the project and name the Anton Art Center as an applicant agency for the grant. And he provided more information, which is attached.
We also have Mr. Gilchrist on lot, on the line, so he, if we need any questions, ask of him, he is available. Are there any questions or comments about this?
I just think this is a great opportunity to help move the art space forward.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay, hearing done. Roll call, please.
Campbell.
Yes.
Good, no.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Crop.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to G, support advancing McComb grant proposal. I'll entertain a motion, please. Could I have a motion, please?
I move the same Mount Clemens City Commission hereby nominate Avancem McComb to be the applicant agency for the purpose of submitting a proposal for the consideration to the Michigan oh-nine community project funding opportunity.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Hammond. Supported by, I'm sorry, moved by Commissioner Hammond, supported by Commissioner Campbell. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, this is the, the same opportunity through Congressman Levin's office that we just talked about with the art space proposal. The proposal we're submitting in this case is coming from Advancing McComb, was prepared by Diane Banks. And this one is for, to support recreation programs and facilities. And this is a joint proposal with the City of East Point. Or for the City of East Point. It's actually been prepared by Advancing McComb.
I believe we have Ms. Banks on the line as well. I guess I should look. Patrick, is she on the line?
I don't see her.
Okay. All right then. I guess she can't answer questions. There, there are, there's information attached. So does anyone have any questions or comments about that proposal? Okay, hearing or seeing none, then we will ask for a roll call, please.
Good, no.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Crop.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Item nine H, approve MedStar Emergency Medical Services contract. I'll entertain a motion, please.
Motion to approve the MedStar Emergency Medical Services contract as presented.
For.
Moved by Commissioner Campbell, supported by Commissioner Goodenough. Mr. Johnson?
Yes, thank you. Chief Shipman worked with MedStar to finally get a renewal contract agreement prepared for the city commission's consideration. This contract outlines the services that MedStar will provide, and it will ensure that the residents and visitors of Mount Clemens will continue to have quality emergency medical transport service responding in a timely fashion. This service is provided at no cost to the city. The contract meets or exceeds the National Fire Protection Association seventeen-ten standard for the organization and deployment of fire suppression operations, emergency medical operations, and special operations to the public by career fire departments. The City of Mount Clemens and the Mount Clemens Fire Department have a long history of working with MedStar in this capacity. And the fire chief will meet with representatives of MedStar on a quarterly basis to evaluate service. Thank you.
And I'm assuming we also have Chief Shipman on the line if anyone has any questions specifically about the contract. Is there anyone who has any questions or comments on this?
Sounds like a lot of hard work went into this, and it's going to provide good services to all the residents and visitors to the City of Mount Clemens. So thank you very much to the fire chief for the work on this.
There were some questions regarding MedStar's response time in the past. Chief Shipman, what was included in our, the contract that maybe change, will change that?
I'm not sure what the questions were regarding response times from the past, but compared to the contracts we've had in the past, they guarantee the response time, an average response time of a minute faster than what we've had in the past, so it has improved by sixty seconds.
Okay. Excellent. Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing done. We will ask for a roll call, please.
Good, no.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Crop.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Thank you. Sorry, computer, hold on, sorry. Okay, we will go ahead and move to nine I, consider Kiwanis Club gaming request. I'll entertain a motion. Go ahead.
Mayor Crop, I, I move to adopt a local governing body resolution for charitable gaming licenses for the Mount Clemens Kiwanis Club.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Voorhees, supported by Commissioner Campbell. Mr. Johnson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mount Clemens Kiwanis Club has provided support and opportunities to children in Mount Clemens and surrounding areas since nineteen twenty-one. In celebration of the organization's hundredth anniversary, the Kiwanis Club wishes to conduct a raffle this summer, and they're applying for a charitable gaming license from the state of Michigan to do so. As part of the application process, state law requires the local government subdivision in which the organization is based recognize it by resolution as a nonprofit organization in the community. Mount Clemens Kiwanis Club is recognized by the Internal Revenue Service as a five oh-one C three organization. The motion recommends that you adopt the charitable local governing body resolution for charitable gaming, which is attached.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions or comments? There's no limit on how many gaming licenses or anything that we can, like a yearly quote, like yearly cap or anything like that, right? And we can.
No, there is not.
No.
Okay. All right. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Okay, hearing done. Roll call, please.
Hammond.
Yes.
Crop.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Good, no. Commissioner Goodenough?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to agenda item purchases and payments of invoices, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve purchase, purchases and payment of invoices as presented.
Moved by Commissioner Campbell, supported by Commissioner, I'm sorry, was that Hammond?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Crop.
I'm sorry, I didn't ask for questions or comments. Did anybody have any questions or comments on the purchases and payments of invoices? Okay, sorry, roll, roll call, please.
Crop.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Good, no.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Moving on to agenda item ten, consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve consent agenda as presented.
Moved by Commissioner Campbell, supported by Commissioner Hammond. Roll call, please.
Voorhees.
Yeah.
Campbell.
Yes.
Good, no.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Crop.
Yes. Agenda item ten, city manager report. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. COVID-nineteen cases are spiking in Michigan across and across the nation. Our numbers are approaching the kind of numbers we saw in November and December during this, what was called the so-called second wave. They're much higher than they were at any point last spring during the initial wave. As of April fifth, everyone in Michigan age sixteen or older is eligible to receive a COVID vaccination. For more information, there's a link you can click to take you to McComb County Vaccine Central, which will help you find a place where you get a vaccine, or you can apply for an appointment at McComb County's Health Department facilities. They've got multiple facilities now. Yard waste, apparently, it may have actually started last week, not today. But yard waste pickup is active again. And if you want information on it, there's a link there for the yard waste program and also a link there for the regular trash pickup program. Branding survey, it's gotten off to a very, very good start. It was released, I think it was Wednesday or Thursday. As of Friday morning, they had already had over three hundred and taken it. As of today, I think it was four hundred and twenty-two at about, oh, that's probably around one or two P M. So far, we had promoted it by much more than our website, social media. The mayor sent out an email today to local pastors asking for it to be included in church bulletins and put on church bulletin boards. Also, Brandon at the library is sending it out through the library listserv, and we're going to try to see if we can get it sent out to school parents as well. Boys and Girls Club, they're planning to hold several meetings. They're planning to hold several meetings to obtain community input. They're starting with a, with a meeting just of community leaders, which is tentatively scheduled for Sunday, the 18th. All city commissioners and school board members will be invited. New staff. We have a new deputy city clerk starting on Wednesday. Her name is Nancy Carter. And I have a new executive assistant for the city manager's office, who will also be providing staff support to the mayor and city commissions. Her name is Teresa Bryant, and she'll be starting next Monday, April 12th. Nikki Bertusnick was promoted to a position in human resources. Future agendas are shown. Things are very likely to change, but this is what we're currently projecting. Thank you.
Thank you. This is the second opportunity for the public to participate in the meeting. All that we ask is that you give us your first name to get in line, and then your, then we'll ask for your full name and abiding by our two-minute rule for this portion. Is there anyone who would like to be included in public participation?
Yes.
Okay, Patrick, is there anyone else who would like to be included?
Yes.
I have Phil.
And David.
And David. Okay. We'll go ahead and get started with Patrick. Can you give us your full name and your address, and then we'll give you your two minutes?
Yeah, Patrick, 138 Northbound Grashit. Just a quick contradiction to how the two, two caregiver permits. So if there's several multi-resident structures here in, in Mount Clemens. So if you have a four-unit structure, that means two caregivers per unit. So now you have an abundance of plants being able to be grown in a lock-secured facility, which would be compliant with state law. So how would that work? Imagine, I mean, me personally, I wouldn't want to live next to it. But how would that work instead of being in a residential area? That'd be, it'd be better off going into a commercial unit when you have one caregiver per that unit versus allowing a co-op. So it'd be a lot easier if you don't allow co-ops and just have one person per commercial unit versus having two pers, per residential unit, and then having four units per residential location. Just saying, but I yield my time.
Thank you. Phil?
Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to thank the commission for your support of the art space grant proposal to Congressman Levin's office, as well as the Kiwanis Club charitable gaming request. As you know, I'm involved in both of those organizations, and those are going to be some very important measures for each group to be able to move some of their key initiatives forward. I think I forgot to say my address, 1130 Wellaslee Drive, Mount Clemens, also 125 McComb Place, also Mount Clemens. Thank you.
Thank you. And David?
Yeah, my name is David. I'm 176 Queen Street, 13-year resident. I just would like to vote for 90 in order to what we voted on in the original 2009, I believe, of five caregivers. If that's what the state and the people voted on, I don't think the city should limit the amount of caregivers that we have.
Thank you. Is there anyone else we'd like to participate in public participations? Okay. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Voorhees.
I would just like to congratulate the Greater Morning Star Missionary Baptist Church and the Kiwanis Club of Mount Clemens on their 100th anniversaries. 1921 was a very special year in the, in Mount Clemens, I can see. With that, once a Clemite, always a Clemite.
Thank you. Commissioner Goodnow?
I concur with Commissioner Voorhees. I actually grew up in that church, and so congratulations to Morning Star. And in addition to that, the National Council of Negro Women will be having a fitness fair, which is virtual. If you go to our webpage, that information will be available through the entire month of April. And be blessed, mask on, and stay safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell?
I do want to say congratulations to Greater Morning Star and to seeing Ms. Dixon, who I've known for many years. So thank you for all her hard work on that. Also, I have one concern, the Mount Clemens Federal Savings and Loan Building, the former stadium nightclub, the back windows of that which are facing the new building that's going to be built on northbound Grashit, the, although the windows are falling out, and there is now broken glass laying all around the sidewalk back there. So I don't know who owns that building, but whoever owns it needs to take responsibility for the upkeep of that. So someone needs to look into the broken windows and glass that's laying all around. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hammond?
I would also like to congratulate GMS, Greater Morning Star, on their church anniversary and also Pastor Martin. I enjoy the car parade with them on Friday, and I look forward to continuing to celebrate in all month long and all year long with Greater Morning Star and Pastor Martin. I would like to also welcome Nancy and Teresa, and I'm looking forward to meeting both of you. And also congratulations to Nikki on her promotion. That's all I have for tonight.
Very good. And I want to say ditto on all of what the commissioner said. You know, Greater Morning Star has been an integral part of our community for 100 years, and that's a huge milestone. So thank you for including me in your car parade on Friday. That was a lot of fun. I think my son really enjoyed being able to drive through red lights. So we thought that was really cool. And I also wanted to thank Jean Dixon for all of her work on that committee. I know that she's been planning a lot of things, and it's been a lot of work. So thank you for that. And I look forward to coming to church and reading the proposal when we can safely do so. I too would like to remind people with all of the numbers going in the direction that they are, which is up, that they be very careful, wear your mask, and, you know, try to so safely social distance. And say a little prayer for my mom. She has been diagnosed with COVID. She's doing okay, but you can say a little prayer. That doesn't hurt. I also wanted to thank everyone for supporting the art space initiative. I've served on the committee for that. And we've, we had really great momentum going, but because of COVID, a lot of the funding agencies that we were able to tap into in the past for support unfortunately can switch their missions to be COVID-related, and so that has now hurt our, it hurt the initiative of moving art space forward. So hopefully, we will be one of the funding, funded projects through the federal government. That would be terrific. So I really do believe that art space has a possibility of helping downtown revitalization. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Campbell, supported by Commissioner Hammond. Roll call, please. Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Goodnow.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Crop.
Yes.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.